Everyone, sorry about the little late start. I want to welcome everybody to this special call meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, August 28, 2025. Time is currently about 10:15. First item is public comments. Any citizens that wish to address the council on any matter may do so. We just asked you signed up prior to this meeting. To do that, please know that no final decisions or discussion will take place regarding public comments, and we ask you please keep your comments to three minutes or so. So with that, we'll start with Twyla Clayton. If you would come to the podium, please. I know it seems very formal, but it's so we get a good recording.
Mayor, while she's coming up, Kathy, does Mike need to unmute?
Yes.
Oh.
Kelly, can you help Mike unmute? Thank you.
I should have said something about that. Councilmember Pilkington is traveling today and is joining us virtually, so he's here. Are we ready for Ms. Clayton?
I think we lost Mr. Pilkington.
Okay, Ms. Clayton, go ahead while they're figuring out Mike there.
Good morning. I just had two comments. One, I had many people that wanted to attend today, but given the time that this was, they had to work. I don't find that to be a coincidence that we're having to meet about raising property taxes, yet the people who pay them aren't able to attend. The other thing that I wanted to mention was my concern is about Midway Drive. I live off of Midway Drive in Temple. The road is very, very uneven. It's very unsafe. We have a school on that road, Bonham Middle School. The street is not lined properly. You can barely delineate where the lanes are. It's extremely unsafe. This has been happening for a very long time. So I just, I wanted that on the record. That we deserve better. We paid, if we're going to be asked to pay probably $20 more a year with this tax hike. I want to see some improvement. We live here. We work here. We raise our kids here. Been here 45 years. We deserve better. Our city council deserves to represent us better. Our city council deserves to have meetings available to its people at times that they can attend, whether that inconvenience is you to have to come in on a Saturday to have everybody here. I think that that's appropriate, and that's all. Thank you for hearing my comments.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am. Alan? It's good to see you in person, Alan. It's been a while.
Thank you. It's good to see you too, Mayor. Mayor and Council. My name's Alan Lidle. I live here in Temple. I was going to talk to you about the brush. I learned earlier today that we've got that under control finally. And it's taken us a little bit of time, but they're working very hard on it. So I would like to talk to you about the changes to our trash pickup. They seem to be working quite well, having both the recycle and the trash on. They seem to be working quite well, having both the recycle and the trash on the same day. It's, I don't know if it's really making it any longer for the gentlemen to complete their routes, but they certainly are doing an excellent job. And since we started that, I haven't had any troubles at all getting my trash and recycle picked up. So I want to thank our city solid waste department for the hard work they put in for that. And thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Alan. Just real quickly, Midway Drive, isn't that on the plan?
The striping for Midway Drive, council may recall that currently our budget doesn't provide, we don't have a pavement marking crew or any in-house resources that are able to do that. But we have heard from multiple council members who I know y'all have heard from your constituents. I also live in South Temple, so I drive that road myself quite often. We did include the pavement marking of Midway Drive in the contract that you recently approved for Slurry Seal. So they, when we repave the roads, we, obviously there's a component of that of remarking. So while that road will not be, is not a candidate for Slurry Seal, they will stripe it. And then you have recently also approved a contract to begin the design of the ultimate improvements to that road. As you know, that road is in an area that has some major soil condition issues. Not unlike Kegley, it will be an extensive project that will need major reconstruction. It'll have to be torn out and rebuilt from the beginning. It's not a candidate for overlay or Slurry Seal or other more minor maintenance opportunities or options. And you just awarded that contract, you know, maybe a month ago.
Yeah.
Ago or so.
Really putting you on the spot. I know you don't have those dates memorized, but ballpark, you know when that project's supposed to start, if you were guessing.
The, the design of that project is underway. So we, again, you, you, you authorized that a month or so ago, so that, that has started. I believe that the design timeline is just right at a year, maybe just a little bit shy of that. And David may remember, I'll put him on the spot too. He may remember differently than, or more accurately. I know that we are doing a couple of additional steps in that design contract than we do on some other roads for two reasons. One, because of the soil conditions, we're going to do some additional assessment, making sure that we design the correct street section so that the, the road is last for a long time. Again, similar to if you, if you recall what we did with Kegley and having to remove more of the underlying soil and replacing that with more stable fill than you would in other areas that have more stable soil conditions naturally. So that, that will have a little bit more investigation and work to make sure we get that right. And then the other thing that we're looking at is traffic impact analysis, so that we design the correct street section in terms of lanes. Certainly, the, the road from I-35 through the, probably through Bonham. It makes sense for that to have four travel lanes and a center turn lane. But as you continue the street section more towards the neighborhoods, then it's, it's possible that that doesn't need to stay quite as wide. And of course, the more pavement you have, especially it's going to be very expensive to do because of the soil condition. So it may make, we want to present options. It may make sense to narrow down, maybe have turn lanes at strategic areas, but maybe not a continuous. It's essentially continuous five lanes right now. And so we might be able to rebuild with a more cost-effective solution if we don't have, if we don't put continuous turn lane all the way through. But we really want to make sure that we're not making an option that maybe saves a little bit money now, but creates a problem in the future. So we want to have a traffic analysis done to project what the true needs for that road to carry, both now and based on growth in the future, so that we don't, again, we don't make a decision for today to save a penny when ultimately it needs to be, to stay how it is. So we're going to do those extra steps in the design. So it may take a little bit longer than a typical, typical, you would see a nine to 12 month design process for that. As council will recall, there is, Midway is on the capital plan. But there will need to be some choices made between projects and/or future tax rate impacts related to that. So it is not, the construction would not begin this fiscal year because we'll be in the design process. So that's a decision that once you get a cost estimate from the design, we can make that decision. I doubt that there will be much, if any, right-of-way acquisition. So we will probably be able to move to, you know, to construction a little bit faster than you would see other projects, even though where the design phase might be extended for those reasons. The right-of-way phase will probably be either nonexistent, or if we have to do it, it's probably just for some temporary construction easements versus more permanent disruptions to homes. And then the other thing that I would say that we need to keep in consideration is as TechStop plans their expansion and work on the interstate, which will impact the interstate in, through the, through that area. That we just want to be thoughtful about when we go under construction with Midway, just to make sure that we maintain. I know sometimes it probably seems like we, we don't consider that in, and how people will route around construction zones, but to the extent that we can, we want to be thoughtful about coordinating that with TechStop, both from a work product standpoint, but also for the traveling public, just to make sure that all of their routes aren't closed down at one time. So there's a lot to consider there. We just started, you know, just got awarded in the last few weeks. So we're at the very beginning stage of the, of the process. But the existing road in its existing condition will be striped this, probably in September, I think, is when they're supposed to do that work. So again, that won't improve the driving condition, the pavement condition, but it'll improve the safety by having those lanes more clearly marked.
It is kind of precarious over there. So that will be nice to have that done.
I agree. Thank you.
Well, and you know, also part of the delay in strapping was you don't want to stripe something. Three years later, you come and you rip it all out, you know, and that, that's not always the best use of money. But you also have to find a time where you can figure out in the budget where an expensive road like that can be slotted in with minimum impact on the tax rate. And so all those things are happening at the same time. I've always, and I'll make this story very brief, but sort of my, my, my pet project when it comes time to, to delaying roads and the cost is Kegley. When I first came on council in 13, we talked about Kegley. We talked about Kegley probably four times during my time on council until we finally decided to do it. And during that time span, the expense of Kegley went up probably 80%. What the cost was going to be in 13 or 14 versus what the final cost will be when it's finally done. So full understanding of the, of the importance of that road, but it's very expensive. It's, it's, these roads are millions of dollars a mile. And it's just, it takes extensive planning. You don't just go rip it out and start again, especially with those soils. You know, I know in my time here, the, the work that's been done with Kegley has been very expensive. And also the work that was done in Western Hills. A lot of those roads were asphalt ripped out and now they're concrete because of the, the horrible soil condition. So it's, it's just a lot to it.
Yes, currently with our 30% design contract, the engineer had estimated the cost at 26.4 million. But that's probably not considering, you know, the various soils and.
Yeah.
That's early preliminary estimate.
Like very early, before even 30% design. So.
And other things that, that, you know, we can do as we, as we evaluate this project and, you know, what the scope will be, is also the, the length of the project. Because certainly the closer you get to 35, the worse condition the road is in, and the closer you get to, you know, Oak Hill area, that is more favorable, you know, that, that is not as in poor condition. So we'll just have to work through that on design. And our goal is to bring you options for your considerations so that we can set you up with the information to make the best choice for the community.
What'll be interesting to see is what the strapping actually ends up looking like when it's done, as the strapping truck drives over all those bumps. Yeah. I bet, I bet it's not going to be perfectly straight lines either. So, yeah, that, that whole area out there is quite a challenge. Alan, it's nice to have new trash trucks in. So, you know, as we've said all along, we've, we've had the money, we've had the personnel, we just frankly needed good reliable equipment. Now that it's all coming in. I think of the 11 trucks that we didn't have at the beginning of the year, I think eight or nine of those are in now. So that's nice. And the last thing, and this is always very important to me. One thing that we on the Temple City Council have been very, very intentional about is transparency. There's not ever anything that we try to quote unquote, get away with. We don't change meeting times. We don't, you know, in, in order to, so the public's not there. That simply doesn't happen. We started this budget process in February with strategic planning. Those meetings were open to the public. We did workshops with council. We, all of our workshops, you know, our standard workshops are, are always available. Those start at five o'clock. The reason why this happens at like 10:00 in the morning is state of Texas statutory requirement says that you have to adopt your budget in a certain number of days. And this will be one of the last days that we could adopt the budget. So it just happens to be at 10:00 in the morning, but there have been at least 10 other meetings, at least, that have been available at 5:00, our standard time. And, you know, you say, well, maybe you should start them at seven. Well, somebody says, well, I'm tending to the kids at 7:00 PM. Well, you should just do it on Saturday. Well, we're traveling on Sat. So we try to pick a time, 5:00, first and third Thursday. Statutory requirements require that this meeting be held today for the second reading to finally put the budget into place. And that's why this happens now. No one's up to anything. So, and frankly, if it were, if it were important to a wide group of people, at 10:00, these, this would still be, this auditorium would still be full of people if, if they wanted to be here. So that being said, let's move on to the next item, which is the budget items. So I'm going to read items one through four in together. Item number one is to conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed tax rate of .6999 per hundred dollar valuation for fiscal year 2026, which is the 2020, the tax year that starts in October 2025. Item two A is to adopt the city's budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025 and ending September 30th, 2026, including the operating budget for 2025, 2026 business, I'm sorry, the operating budget for 2025, the business plan, capital improvement plan, general government pay plan, civil service pay plan, fiscal and budgetary policy, and the investment policy. Item two B is to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget. This budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $11,689,227, which is a 20.95% increase from last year's budget. This property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the rolls this year is $3,450,556. Item three is the second and final reading, considering adopting an ordinance approving the tax roll and authorizing calculation of the amount of tax that can be determined for all real and personal property in the city for fiscal year 2026, which begins in October 2025. Item four is the second and final reading to consider adopting an ordinance, setting a tax rate of .6999 per hundred dollar valuation comprised of .3754 for maintenance and operations and .3245 for debt service for fiscal year 2026 and making the appropriation for the regular operation of the city. So we're going to do a public hearing on all of those, all at one time. So anyone wishing to speak on items one through four, as you step to the podium, state your name for the record.
Mayor, we do have some presentations that might be helpful if you want to hear them.
We do. I'm sorry. I jumped. I thought we'd do public hearing, but no, let's, let's do the presentation. I'm sorry.
And Kelly, I think that probably, starting with the budget, just because Tracy's going to cover the tax rate and utility rates, but before you hear those, I think it would be appropriate to hear what, how that money is going to be utilized and why you would be considering those rates, if that is okay.
Keeping it over there.
We can start with the budget. Yes, thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present this year's proposed budget to you all and for your consideration today. As you know, the, the city of Temple actually presents its budget in the context of a six-year business plan. And we do that today as well. So that business plan as foundation is our strategic plan. It sets the direction for the organization and the community and helps us determine where the financial priorities are to help accomplish the goals that you have set. It, it includes a financial plan that includes all six years of the business plan. It includes the official annual budget that appropriates the funding for the upcoming fiscal year, which begins on October 1st of 2026, I'm sorry, of 2025, and will end on September 30th of 2026. So these are the activities and programs and staffing that will be in place for our upcoming fiscal year. And then finally, it includes our six-year capital plan as well. We present the annual budget in the context of a business plan to ensure that as you make decisions, important decisions for the community, you are not looking at the, the question with just a tiny bit of the information, but you're able to see how each piece of the puzzle fits in to the broader picture and the broader vision that you have set for our organization and for the community. As I mentioned, the strategic plan is the foundation of our business plan. It includes the vision, the mission, the values, and the five focus areas that you have asked staff to focus on as we continue to provide services to our community. Our vision is for Temple to be a place that you love to call home. This is inclusive of not only our residents, but we also want to be a place where businesses choose and thrive and create jobs for our community. Our mission is to provide exceptional service without exception. We are a service-based organization. That is the heart of what we do is to provide services for our community. So we want to do that really well. We do that in the context of organizational values that include commitment, innovation, integrity, accountability, and collaboration. And we align all of our goals and all of our work through five focus areas, and that's high-performing organization, communication and collaboration, places and spaces, smart growth, and health and safety. Within those five focus areas, you have a set several strategic goals. You might have to help me out, Kelly. There it goes. There are nine total goals proposed this year, which is very similar to what you have adopted in the past. Those include being an organization that's committed to performance excellence, having talented and dedicated employees who have a heart for service, ensuring we have facilities, equipment, and technology that power performance, being an open and responsive, and having open and responsive communication and community engagement, having beautiful spaces and unique experiences, and neighborhoods where people love to live, being a health, healthy and safe community, having infrastructure and systems that support exceptional service and safe, safe, smart growth, and being a city that supports well-managed growth and development to promote a thriving economy. So I do want to cover some of the resources that we're recommending as part of the budget and business plan that helps us move progress forward in each of those five focus areas and those nine goal areas. I'd like to start this year with health and safety because that has been a significant focus for us in this budget process and will be a significant focus in, in all six years of the plan, is my, is my guess. So starting with police, I just want to cover a few of the top priority areas that we are trying to accomplish as we look to fund additional police officer positions and resources. The first priority is in police patrol. I think chief would tell you that this is certainly the heart of the department and is an incredibly important area to make sure that we continue to resource appropriately. Council will recall that for many, many years now, we have had eight patrol districts. And as our community continues to grow, especially as we have seen the west side of our community become more and more dense in development, it's really appropriate at this time for us to add additional patrol districts. So we have a recommendation that we move from eight patrol districts to 10 patrol districts, while at the same time going from 12-hour shifts to 10-hour shifts. So this is our, our 10-10 priority. This has been a program that we have been working on together for several years now. You have already added several phases of staffing to the police. You have already added several phases of staffing to the police department in order to accomplish this goal. Chief has worked really hard to actually hire those positions that you have authorized, and he has done a great job at that. So we are very close to being in the first phase of implementation with this priority. But there's still more resources needed to be added here as we continue to grow. And so the budget does propose additional patrol officers as well as three lieutenants in the future to help provide leadership to these patrol teams so that every shift, every day has a watch commander present and on shift during the all times. And so this is a this has been and continues to be a primary focus of the staffing resources for the department. But another major priority includes our training program. You have made significant investments in facilities and equipment to really improve the availability of training resources to our team, and we are grateful for that. As we see the first phase of facilities open there at the Public Safety Training Center on Airport, we really need some dedicated police officers to run those training programs. Right now, there aren't any dedicated officers to to staff those facilities, so this is a significant priority for chief in the department. And this is proposed to be funded in F Y twenty twenty six. In future years of the plan, we are recommending additional resources in our criminal investigations team, which includes primarily additional sworn officers, including additional property crime technicians, but it does also include one civilian position, which is a crime scene technician supervisor. We also have a recommendation to continue to add resources and expand on our COPS program or community oriented policing program, which helps to connect the department with our neighborhoods and our community. This is a really critical team within our department. I know that chief really values that every officer provides community policing, but this team is really a dedicated resource for us and very important. So we do have some recommendations related to some existing resources to continue to bolster this team in future years. And then our violent crime enforcement squad has also been a priority that has been approached from a multi-phase approach, and we have the final staffing phases still to come as part of the future years of this plan. And then Animal Services is actually a unit, a division of our police department. So it's under the direction of Chief Reynolds. And as we have seen both an expansion to our animal shelter that you all have supported in recent years, as well as just continued growth in the community needing response capabilities for animal services, we do have some recommendations for some additional positions, including one additional position in F Y twenty twenty six, this upcoming fiscal year, which is to add an animal services manager to the team. And then in future years, we have proposed additional shelter technicians to help provide the staffing needed for the expanded services that are offered there at the shelter. So there are a total of four, five positions recommended to be funded in twenty twenty six. That includes two patrol officers, two training officers, and that animal services manager. In the future, we are looking at a total of thirty six police positions throughout the six year plan, with thirty of those being sworn and six of those being civilian positions. And that covers all of those priorities that I just mentioned, our investigations, violent crime, cops program, administration, and animal services, as well, of course, patrol. As we turn our attention to fire, there are also many, many needs here, and I would like to highlight some of the priorities. First and foremost is the desire to move towards a two response district program for our fire teams. Right now, we have one battalion chief who serves as the scene supervisor for any major incidences that occur throughout the community. This chief is responsible for managing, providing day to day management of all of the companies that are serving the community, which currently is a total of ten. This is right on the tipping point for where you need to consider an additional battalion chief, the growth rate that we have, the the times that we have multiple major incidents occurring simultaneously throughout the community. And certainly, as we talk about some of our future additions, recommendations of additional companies and fire stations, we really need to move to a two district response model. So what this means is that we would essentially split the community by I thirty five. So we would have a battalion chief managing companies and incidences on the west side and a battalion chief managing companies and incidents on the right side of I thirty five or the east side of I thirty five. And so this would add six additional positions to the department. Squad, and that is that is a recommendation for fiscal year twenty twenty six. In the future, we do have recommendations for two additional squad units. We do have a squad that is that is at station one right now. They primarily respond, station one squad primarily responds to emergency medical calls. And we also have a squad unit at station three, which is a rescue squad. We are proposing two additional squads in this in this business plan. One would be station four. This would be a interim measure as we look to the future in having an additional station ten to serve South Temple. Station four is on Waters Dairy, so it's our southernmost station at the moment. And as we have seen growth and anticipate continuing to see growth, particularly in the south and southeast portion of our community in recent years, station four is becoming more and more busy. And because of its geography, where it's the more, the most distant station, sometimes when when a unit is busy at station four on a call and an additional unit is needed, an additional call comes in in that service unit, we have to pull resources from an adjacent or nearby district. This would allow us to provide more reliability in in response service, keeping those units within their district more frequently. And again, would be an interim solution as we look to the future building out for station ten, station ten. And so this squad is recommended in F Y twenty seven. And then we have three new stations proposed. First would be station nine, which would be in the outer loop and Tarver Jupiter Road area. Station ten would be in South Temple, near ninety three and thirty first street. Station eleven would be in North Temple, Northwest Temple, north, just north of the outer loop in the industrial park area. And so all three of those stations are proposed for design, construction, and operations within this business plan. So that includes staffing up those three new stations. Station nine is proposed as a truck company, station ten and eleven as an engine company, both engine companies. And so those are the recommendations we have related to staffing for new stations. Ladder truck staffing. So right now, we have minimum staffing on all of our companies, all of our our engine and truck companies at three. So we will have a captain, a driver, and a firefighter assigned to each of those apparatus. We would like to be able to have a four person minimum staffing on all of our ladder truck companies. This is a industry recommended standard and one we would like to see implemented here in Temple. We do currently have trucks at station one, three, and six. And again, as I mentioned, station nine is proposed as a truck company. So this would mean that we need three additional firefighters per truck in order to accomplish this. The business plan as proposed to you today begins this priority by providing staffing for two of those four trucks. And so the the other two would fall into future years beyond the current plan right now. In addition to all of those primary priorities, and and we've talked about it this a few times, counsel, but if you'll humor me, I just want to make sure that members of the public who are here understand this concept. So our fire department, of course, provides service to our community twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty five days a year. So whether a firefighter is a firefighter has to be on that truck. So at all times, three, three people have to be at work, ready to respond to incidences per company, per truck, per apparatus. So if somebody is sick or on vacation or in training or deployed, for example, to another nearby community, as has occurred several times for us as we have supported disasters in neighboring Texas communities, that that person's position essentially has to be backfilled. So unlike a more administrated position where if you're not there that day, then you don't have to call in somebody to fill that role. You just, your work waits for you when you come back. The nine one one calls do not wait. So we have to make sure that we have the minimum staffing for each of our units available at all times. Right now, our minimum staffing is thirty. Again, we have ten companies, three, three people per company. And so at any, at any time, we need to have thirty firefighter positions on staff. So we have, of course, those thirty positions hired, but we also hire what we call coverage firefighters. So for every three frontline firefighters, we have one additional firefighter on our team so that when one of those folks is on vacation, is not feeling well, is in training, is in is deployed to another area, then we are able to bring in that coverage officer to fill that spot without requiring a firefighter who has already been on shift to come back and serve an even longer service time. So as you know, our firefighters work twenty four hours on and forty eight hours off. So when they have to cover an additional shift, that is a really long time to be in service and ready to respond to some really tough situations. So we try to keep that three to one ratio. So right now, we have ten coverage officers, or firefighters, rather, on each, on each team. We have ten on, on two of our shifts. We have eleven on one of our shifts. I don't know how that happened. I think that even predated me and you, chief. So but as we add additional, all of these things that we've talked about. So every time we add another company, a new fire station, a new fire station comes online, another person is added to the truck. We add a new squad. We add a battalion chief. All of those numbers add to that minimum staffing. So as we, as we go through this plan and we add all of those positions up that I've just talked about, our minimum staffing will go from thirty firefighters currently to forty five in the future, which means then that we need to have five additional coverage officers per shift to keep up with that three to one ratio. So that is why fifteen additional firefighters are proposed to just keep us at that three to one ratio as we add frontline. So really, every time you add one firefighter, you really have to add four because there's three shifts, and then you need to add an extra for that coverage. So every, if you want, if you want to take one truck from three people to four people, that's four people because you got to have one per shift plus a coverage officer or firefighter. There are a couple of areas that are not part of minimum staffing that are still really critical parts of our department, including our fire marshal's office, which provides many, many important services to our community and is really focused on the prevention of fire through development standards, inspections, and community education. This is a small but mighty team, and we do have recommendations for several additional positions in the future. So we make sure that we're that we're investing appropriately in preventing the tragedies from occurring before our response units need to to be there to respond to them. This team also handles the hiring background checks for our new firefighter. So as I switch over here to show you the total numbers that are recommended, it includes seventy new positions over the six year time period. So part of the the resources in prevention and education will also make sure that we have the resources on our team to actually hire those seventy firefighters, and we don't get backlog by not having a team member able to help us process those applicants and make sure that we get the right people on our team. And then last, but certainly not least, as with police, our training program for fire is also very critical. Our fire department has had a facility there at public, at our our public safety training campus longer than than our police team. So they do have some resources in place, but you have supported some really amazing and needed expansions to that facility as well for our fire team. And so we are asking for additional training firefighters in that and for the fire department as well. So current for fiscal year twenty six, the upcoming budget, we are requesting ten sworn positions. Again, that's those battalion chiefs to implement the two response districts, the minimum staffing that will keep our ratio where it needs to be with the three to one, and then two folks in fire marshal's office to help bolster our prevention, education, and hiring programs. In the future, we have seventy total positions recommended in fire, which includes sixty eight sworn positions and two non sworn positions. We also have the capital program to support those three additional fire stations, as well as relocation of station seven, some improvements to some of our existing stations, as well as a some additional space and expansion of our downtown police headquarters as well. As we turn to code compliance, another important element in keeping our community health and healthy and safe, there are no additional resources for code compliance proposed for the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget. But for the full plan, the full six year plan, there are additional code compliance officers and a code compliance manager or team leader position proposed. So that those are future positions. And then we, as council will recall, we've been working on a partnership with Feed My Sheep. And so we do have some funding proposed through our Community Development Block Grant Program, which is restricted funding to help support those efforts in our partnership with Feed My Sheep. As we turn to the next focus area of high performing organization, we have several investments proposed for technology to make sure that we have the tools necessary to provide services to our community. So this involves not only the upgrade and upkeep and purchase of new software programs and hardware and and technology tools, but also some staffing resources to support that. There are no staffing additions in F Y twenty twenty six for our I T team, but there are some future recommended positions in future years, including a couple of project management resources to help us onboard those new systems. We have a major upgrade to our financial system on the horizon, which will be a major undertaking. And I think, I think Tracy might be trying to push it out on me till so she doesn't have to deal with it. But that that will be a major undertaking. We have some contract management software, some document management software, some needs in our, in our parks department. So some major projects coming up for us. So those project management resources will be important, as well as additional security administration. One of my, one of the things that keeps me up at night is cybersecurity and just worrying about a cyber attack, which would really cripple our both emergency responses and just day to day business. So we invest heavily in trying to keep our system safe, and we will continue to do that as we grow with your support. As we talk about high quality facilities, our, and we talk about small but mighty teams, that certainly applies to our construction and facility services team. Counsel, you probably recall me saying that right now, we have, we have around six hundred thousand square feet of city facilities that we maintain, and we do that with three maintenance technicians. So they work really hard to to support all that we do and all of the services that we provide to the community by keeping our facilities working well and serving both the the public and our employees who work hard to provide services to the public. We do have one position proposed here in FY 2026, and that is a plumber position. We have historically contracted out plumbing services for, for really all types of services that we need for our facilities. We feel like it's time to bring some of that in-house, and so we would like to, to have an, an on-team plumber. That is the only position proposed for FY 26. In future years, we do recommend that we consider additional maintenance technicians, some additional resources in HVAC and plumbing and electrical, some of our trade specialties to really help make sure that we maintain those facilities. This team also handles the custodial aspect of our facility maintenance, so we do have some additional custodial positions recommended in future years as well. We have a significant investment in capital equipment, and I don't know that there could be any year more of a poster child than this past year that we've been through to demonstrate how important it is that these tools are available to our teams. We have incredibly hard-working staff who truly do have a heart for service, and they go above and beyond and do everything they possibly can to provide, make sure that those services continue to get delivered to the community, but they need the tools that they require in order to deliver that service. So we saw this very clearly this year as those trash trucks that we ordered all the way back in 2022 were delayed significantly. And we saw no trash truck deliveries from 2022 to 2025. We were, we had 12 trucks on order, and we had not seen those delivered until just a couple of months ago. So in the meantime, our, our maintenance folks were working hard to keep the trucks that we did have up and running, and it, and it was, and it has been, as you all know, a really struggling year for us. So it is incredibly important that we stay invested in our capital equipment, so we provide those trucks and equipment and tools that our teams need to deliver services. We are recommending some major investments here this year. We are recommending that we establish a second shift in our Fleet Department to help us make sure that we're able to keep all of our assets on the road and ready to provide service to our community. So as we pick up trash during the day, we will have a team in the evenings ready to maintain those trash trucks and get them back on the road the next morning, ready to, to help our incredible solid waste team provide those services. So this is actually 11 positions proposed in Fleet to be able to accomplish that goal, as well as some leadership positions, some support positions, like inventory, like an inventory technician. So all of that, in addition to the heavy-duty technicians that we will need to implement that second shift, this is, we've heard from council, is a significant priority. And so this is a significant investment. These positions are proposed in FY 2026. So this is a big part of where you have directed that our resources be, be focused in the upcoming year. I will always say that, and I've got lots more to talk about, I'm not done yet, but as we get maybe to a midpoint here, I do want to say that everything that I have spoken about and everything that I will talk about, it sounds great until you can't pay for it. So fiscal responsibility, fiscal conservative approach to the way that we handle the management of our finances, the budgeting of our finances is so important. And so having a strong financial services team is critical to everything we've talked about and everything that we will do. It truly is the foundation for being able to provide services to our community. You can't do anything if you can't pay for it. We have enjoyed a very long history of very strong financial management that starts with the leadership of council, and, and y'all have continued the legacy of focusing on, that, that we've had for many, many, many years of focusing on make-sharing that we have fiscally conservative, financially strong policies in place and management practices, and that has allowed us to do what we've done so far and will take us into the future. Tracy and her team are, are, are the faces of that program. They are the ones that, that get in the trenches and do that work. So there are, we've made an investment in some positions this past year that I've really put to the test this year. Thank you guys so much. We don't have any additions proposed for FY 2026, but in future years, there's a few additional financial positions that we recommend. Just for, as, I'll just give one example, a payroll analyst. So as we talk about 70 additional firefighters, 35 additional police officers, and the, and other positions we'll talk about here in a moment, those folks, while they have a heart for service, they need to get paid. So as we continue to add, staffing, we'll need to continue to add those support positions to make sure we're supporting that staffing as well. Our customer care program, which is a new priority that council supported in the last year, I think this is off to an incredible start. As, as more and more people in the community hear about this program, I'm hearing, I'm getting more feedback that they've really enjoyed the opportunity to engage with our customer care team. This is a dedicated team that provides customer support for our community. You can call them, you can text them, you can chat with them on the website, and you will be chatting with a person, not an AI bot. They are, we, the philosophy that we took as we adopted this program is that you shouldn't have, as a, as a resident of our community, you shouldn't have to have our organizational chart memorized. You shouldn't even have to know what our organizational chart is to get the service that you need. So you shouldn't have, if you've got a pothole, you shouldn't have to figure out who you call about that. There should be one number that you can call, single service, get that issue addressed for you. So that's the heart of what this team does. They're very new, but they've really hit the ground running. We don't have any additional resources planned for this year for this team, but again, as we can, I, I believe that this program has been successful and will continue to be successful. I think we'll see increased utilization of this as we move forward. So we want to make sure that we're adding resources in future years to keep that high level of service as we continue to see this program become more and more important to our community. Our Strategy and Innovation Team, which covers, as its name suggests, our Strategic Initiatives, our Data and Performance Analytics Program, our Continuous Improvement Program, or as I like to endearingly call it, our Red Tape Reduction Team, and our Legislative Engagement Initiatives. This team is, again, no positions proposed for FY 2026, but as we move forward, there are some additional resources in future years planned here to provide additional data analysts and continuous improvement analysts to help us make sure that we are spending our money wisely, that we are being as efficient as we can, that we are, that, that we have a, we are an efficient government. And then finally, in this area, I'll talk about Employer of Choice Initiatives. This, of course, is, I, I sound a little bit like a broken record here, but we are a service-based organization. So what we do is we provide services to the community, and we provide those services through our employees. So if we are to have exceptional services, we have to have exceptional employees to deliver that service. And unfortunately, there's not one silver bullet of something. If you just do this thing, then you'll have a great team who's, you'll get the best and the brightest. It is a, it is a whole host of things that you have to focus on, creating a culture of service, having attraction and retention programs, abilities for people to advance in their careers, appropriate training that they feel like they have, the tools that they need to be supported. And compensation and benefits is certainly among the list of things that you have to consider when you're making sure that your, that, that your organization is set up to attract and retain the very best and brightest to provide those exceptional services to your community. This year, we are recommending that we implement adjustments to our Public Safety Pay Plan. So that's police and fire. As council knows, historically, we've done, we've done an every-other-year approach where general government positions, so street, solid waste, animal services, library, park staff, has pay plan adjustments one year, and then civil service positions, so police and fire sworn positions have adjustments the following year, and then vice versa. This year is a police and fire year. So we are proposing just shy of $2.7 million in funding for pay raises for our police and fire teams. We are recommending that we get each of our starting salaries in each rank to market median plus 4%. And as council will recall, our market is just our nearby cities that we truly do compete with for that talent. So think Colleen, Round Rock, Georgetown, Bryan, College Station, those are, Waco, those are the communities that we compare ourselves to, to establish that market. For communication and collaboration, this has been a high priority for council in the past. We've developed a great team. We, they, they've done great work in making sure that we have more venues and opportunities to connect and communicate and collaborate and engage with our community. We do not have any additional positions proposed in our communications team this year, although there's a couple in future years to support additional community engagement efforts. But for fiscal year 2026, there, the team will remain the same based on this proposal. For Places and Spaces, which covers our parks and recreation programs, among others, we have, we, we don't have any additional staffing proposed for FY 2026 related to parks and recreation, but in future years, we have several, we have several additions that are proposed. Many of those are just in, in expanding our existing teams and existing programs to make sure that we're, we've got enough staff to maintain our beautiful park system and provide recreational opportunities for our growing community. So there are things like adding additional mowing crews, additional custodial crews who maintain restrooms and similar facilities in our parks, additional recreation specialists and program managers in our rec program, additional maintenance technicians at Hillcrest Cemetery, for example, which falls under our Parks and Recreation Department. The one major addition that is proposed, again, not in FY 26, but in a future year, is to establish a park ranger program. This would provide non-sworn but public safety-focused positions within our parks team that would help increase visibility and safety within our park system, provide ambassadors that members of the community can speak with if they have a question, have a concern. These folks would also be the eyes and ears in our parks to be frontline in addressing any needs that, that need attention in the parks. For example, if there's a piece of playground equipment that needs repair, or there's an anthill, you know, in, in a, a playfield or a sport field, making sure that that gets routed to the correct maintenance team to address. So they would be routinely, daily on the ground in our parks, providing eyes and ears both to the community and back to our teams to make sure that our system is safe and a welcoming environment for all who use it. Believe it or not, it is time again for an update to our Parks and Space, Open Space Master Plan. Time flies by so fast when you're having fun, and it feels like we just did this, but it is time again. It is the 10-year mark of the last full update to our park plan, and so we are recommending that we do that, that undertaking in the upcoming year. As council will recall, we recently completed a strategic plan for our Parks Department. So the master plan really deals with the physical assets that are needed. So where do we need additional parks, additional athletic fields, what amenities do we need to see in the parks, courts, you know, all, all of that elements, recreation facilities? And so we'll work with our, assuming you agree, we'll work with our community on implementing or creating that plan. As we turn to libraries, we, we have a potential, again, no staff proposed for F, no additional staff proposed for FY 26. In the future, we have a consideration of beginning our Branch Library Program, which would first provide for a branch library in South Temple, and then later in West and East Temple, that would serve in addition to our North Library Branch, which, which continue to be our central branch, which is in, as you all know, in downtown. Our Love Where You Live Program, which is our Neighborhood Planning Program, as you know, has been something we've worked on together for several years now. We have, we did a significant expansion to this program in the last couple of years, where we grew from the original 18 neighborhoods to a total of 25 neighborhoods, as well as 10 corridors. We are making great progress in this, in this program. Under Erin and her leadership, we've really accomplished a lot of these plans, but we still have several to go. And so we will continue this endeavor. No additional staffing is proposed in this area for FY 2026, but we do have some additional resources in our Neighborhood Services Team and our Planning and Development Team to help support both the, the creation and, but more importantly, the implementation of these plans as we go forward. As we work with our community, we know there are a lot of nonprofits who provide really exceptional programming, and we want to help amplify that and where, where those services intersect with things that the city is trying to accomplish through our strategic plan and can be best delivered by the nonprofit community. We want to make sure that we're partnering well. And so we have several grant programs that we've established over the last few years that we're recommending to continue and/or expand, including our Education and Recreation Partnership Grants. This provides funding to nonprofits in our area that helps to support our, our goals of youth education and recreation. So think like Ralph Wilson Basketball Program is one of the recipients of this grant. We have Community Enhancement Partnership Grants, which provide funding for local nonprofits who are focused on goals in our neighborhood. So this helps fund neighborhood improvement projects, so home improvement projects for those of, those residents who might have some financial constraints and need some assistance in, in getting their property safe and maintained. And then we also have a, a direct grant program that, not through nonprofits, but directly to individual property owners, which is our Neighborhood Improvement Grant Program. And so we are recommending that all three of those programs continue, and, and we continue to expand where we can in helping support the nonprofits who are doing some really great work in our area and are supporting the services that we provide. Our next focus area is smart growth. So we have a robust capital improvement program, many projects underway currently in roadway improvements, water and wastewater facilities, parks, you name it. We, we have projects going on throughout our community. We have an in-house staff team that provides project management support for those projects. And as we continue to grow and, and have additional capital needs, we will need to make sure that we pace the team, our project managers, to make sure that we have project managers who can provide appropriate oversight and management of those projects. We do have two positions recommended in FY, I'm sorry, three positions recommended in FY 2026 in this area, including a project managers in our real estate or our property acquisition for right-of-way resources, as well as taking a look at the, the existing property that the city has and, and may not need and can put back into the private sector and back into, to useful purpose. But also, the team would acquire the right-of-way we need for projects, whether those be roadways or water lines or other types of projects. And then additional project engineer, project manager person, who would, again, help continue to be able to manage the, what seems like the ever-growing list of capital needs that we have in our community. The pavement preservation program, there's, there is no funding recommended for 2026, but I keep this slide in here because this is an important component of the future plan. So FY 27 and beyond, as we've talked about council and workshops, we are proposing that we move our street maintenance into a separate, I think it would be considered an enterprise fund, special revenue fund. So both the existing resources that we have right now, as well as future additions to help maintain our streets and, and related functions, including traffic signals, would become a would become a special revenue fund supported by a specific fee for that purpose. And at that time, we would recommend considering the addition of some, I think, things that would be really helpful in our overall maintenance program for our pavement. We have spent a lot of time talking about this at the council level, I know, but you know, without a routine maintenance program for your infrastructure, what occurs, just like at your house, if you never did routine maintenance and you never changed your air filters and you never cleaned out your gutters and you, you let your house, you know, you never touch up the paint, then over the years, you know, you may not, not notice it the first year, maybe you don't notice it the second year, but over the years, you allow your asset to fall into disrepair. And then to get that back up to a serviceable state, it's a much more expensive prospect if you're doing a full rehabilitation on something you've, you've let fall into disrepair than if over those years, you did the simple preventative maintenance that was necessary to keep that asset in good working condition. And the same occurs with assets here in the city with our street maintenance. If we are investing in the preventative maintenance that, that we recommend, including annual crack sealing, slurry sealing every five to seven years, mill and overlay every 20 years, we can keep our assets in great condition, our streets in good condition for a longer amount of time at a less expensive rate than if we don't maintain them, wait for them to fall into disrepair. And then you're talking about multimillion dollar rehabs, rebuilding of roads throughout the community. So I realize it's maybe a little bit of an old fashioned saying, but my granny would, would say, who was a seamstress, she would say, "A stitch in time saves nine." Meaning, you know, if you've got a little tear in your hem, if you get it right away and you stitch it up, you've got one stitch. If you just let it go and let it go and let it go, then you're, you've got a whole repair job to do. And so that's how I look at the pavement preservation program is let's make sure we're investing annually what we need to do to keep up our infrastructure and not wait until it becomes a, a major rehabilitation need. There are certainly going to be roads because, you know, we, we can't go back in time and say, you know, let's, there, there are roads like we talked about this morning with Midway that are not going to be candidates for crack seal or slurry seal or mill and overlay. They already are at a state where they will need to be fully rehabilitated. So we will, we, we will need to deal with those. But as we move forward, I would love to see us be in a position where we, we are maintaining annually and with preventative maintenance for the future. So that will be, that will be a big program that we talk about in 27 and beyond. But I did want to note that because it is, it is, while it is not in 2026, it is a foundational element of the future of the plan. Same with the in-house mobility crews. We have several crews proposed. As we talked about this morning, we don't have an in-house pavement marking crew. So unless and until the street gets overlaid or slurry sealed, we don't have a resource right now in order to maintain those pavement markings, which is the striping and, and whatnot on the street. So we are recommending an in-house crew so that we can maintain those, those elements more frequently and more cost effectively. An additional patch crew, we have one patch crew right now, an additional tree trimming crew. We have one tree trimming crew right now, a crew focused on alleyway maintenance. We do not have a crew right now for alley maintenance, a sign crew. We have one sign crew right now. So this would provide an additional crew and then an additional street reconstruction crew. And I'm sorry, I'm noticing I forgot to add it to this slide, but I'll mention it. We also have an additional street or a concrete reconstruction crew proposed here as well. So really two construction crews, one street pavement, one concrete. As we turn to utility services and also an incredibly important area of our community, this team provides the very critical resources of water treatment and water reclamation. So sewer wastewater collection and then that, that treatment of that, of that water so that it can be reused in the future to provide additional water for our community. So we have, council has made significant investments in utility services over the last few years. We've talked about this in some of our workshops leading up to this, to this day. But I recall that when, when we started this planning initiative back six years ago, we had a, a standard that we would repair non-emergency water leaks within two months of their report. And that is something that you all, through your leadership, found was not, not appropriate response level, that you wanted to see those addressed much sooner, not only for making sure that we are saving the precious resource that is our water, but also just the damage and the inconvenience that a long-term leak can, can, can occur. So we, under the leadership of Dawn and Kenton and their teams, they have gotten that down to a matter of really as immediately as you can. You do have to call in and give private utilities time to mark their lines so that you don't, don't dig into them. But as soon as those, as soon as that regulatory timeframe is over for someone to mark the line, we have a crew out there addressing the leak today. And so that's a, a big shift in policy and you've resourced the department correctly to be able to provide that service level. So a lot of additions have been made over the last few years. We have a few additional crews still remaining in the six-year plan. This year, in our wastewater collection team, we are recommending the addition of an inflow and infiltration or INI crew. So inflow and infiltration occurs when there's stormwater or rainwater that gets in to the sanitary sewer system. So that can, that can happen because maybe a manhole is damaged or a manhole cover is missing. Those sewer cleanouts you have in your yard, those covers are on there for a reason, put them back on. Because as water can flow down in there, then the, the pipe that was designed just to handle the waste that you're flushing from your toilet, all of a sudden then has a surge from the rainwater and it overwhelms the system, causing it to back up and causing a, an overflow to sometimes occur. And we definitely don't want that to happen. That's, that's bad for our, our, our nature and just, and something we're, we're working really hard to, to reduce. So this crew would be an additional resources dedicated to preventative maintenance of scoping out and, and looking for areas that need to be addressed to prevent inflow and infiltration in our system. And I'm sorry, future crews include, I believe, two additional water crews just to keep up as we continue to grow and add water main. We'll continue to add crews to maintain those additional water lines. And then two additional wastewater crews, I believe, as well. And then as we look to expand into groundwater in the future, council will recall that we're currently underway with the construction of our first production well for groundwater in, in our community. We, this budget proposes a capital improvement project to implement our first aquifer storage and recovery system well. So that will, that will convert the production well to a full ASR system. What that does, it'll, it allows us to take water that we, in times when it's available, but not being used in the system and store it underground in a natural underground lake that's pretty, you know, free from, for example, evaporation concerns and pull that back out in times of higher use and higher need for water. So smoothing out the peaks of demand. So for example, a day in mid-March, when it's pretty mild outside, most of us aren't watering our yards heavily. And so our water treatment plant can still produce 50-plus million gallons a day, but our system's not using anywhere near that because it's sort, it's, it's size for the hot summer day in July, when everybody's watering their yard at the same time, seemingly. And so we can continue to produce at a higher level in those days in March, store that, and then those days in July, we can pull that back out and help supplement the higher use days. So as we, when we move to groundwater operations, we will need some additional operators at our treatment plants to, to handle the groundwater operations. So those are built into the plan as well. Let's talk trash, near and dear to everyone's heart because it's such an important part of community service that we provide. As we've talked about today, the assets that, that we've ordered sometimes three years ago have finally arrived in our community and we're beginning to see the service stabilize. And so we're very grateful for the, the resources that you have provided, council, your leadership and your patience as we've worked through those issues. We do want to make sure that we continue to add routes as needed for the growth of our community. As we've talked about, every 700 to 900 households represents an additional route need for solid waste. So as we continue to see growth in our community through additional residential homes, we will need to plan for additional residential routes. We have both garbage and recycling service. So when we add a garbage route, we also need to add a recycling route. We do have two routes recommended in 2026. So one garbage and one recycling route for residential. We have already ordered those trucks, don't you worry. This would put the staffing in place to add the routes. Then there are two additional routes each in garbage and recycling recommended in the future years of the plan. We have done some pretty significant data analysis on growth and at this point, we believe that will be in an appropriate level. But we will keep a very, I promise you, we will keep a very close eye on that service level. And if we need to make adjustments, you will be the first to know. For commercial, we do recommend an additional side-load route. We currently have one. And this is not, the, the most, the most common form of commercial service is certainly front-load, you know, where you have the, the dumpster coming up from the front of, of the truck. But in downtown, for example, in tight alleys, the side-load is, is really necessary. And then a lot of in our commercial areas in West Temple, we're starting to see more and more side-loads be added. So we would really like to, to implement a second side-load route. And so that is proposed in, in fiscal year 26. We do not have that truck yet, but we've got, we have gotten a, a vendor who would be able to deliver it in a few months. So we feel, feel good that, so that wouldn't be an October 1st implementation, but we will be able to get that truck this year. And so we recommend adding the staff for that position, for that route. And then planning two additional commercial routes in the six-year plan. I have those slated right now as one frontline, front-load and one side-load. But what we're gonna do with your permission is just really watch the permits come in really closely and see which the, which routes need to be added as we move forward. So those are more or less a placeholder in terms of type, whether it's front-load or side-load. I think we watch our commercial activity really closely as we get to that decision point. And then in, in our development services area, again, I do not have any positions proposed for FY 2026, but we do have several needs in this area. So there are recommendations that I have for you for future years, including additional building inspectors, permit technicians, plan reviewers. Really important in this area to help us continue to meet the growth and development in our community. So those positions are slated, or several of those positions are slated in 27. We were not able to get them in 26, but we are recommending them for 27. And then we also continue to recommend funding of our partnership with Temple Economic Development Corporation, which serves as our contracted entity for our industrial marketing and incentive negotiation. We do have some recommendations for some additional in-house economic development personnel, including a, a manager position on our team, as well as some coordinators that can help with small business. We've talked about it in the past as a business navigator position, especially as we have smaller businesses or startup businesses. Sometimes the development process can be overwhelming to them. We try to make it as simple as possible for everyone. But if you don't do it every day, it can be, it can, it can be kind of daunting. So we would like a resource for, to really be able to help shepherd or navigate, if you will, someone through that process so they can be open for business in Temple as soon as possible. Again, none of that, none of those positions proposed for 26, those will all be future considerations. So if you add all that up for 2026, you can see, you can see, maybe, I can't see, maybe a second to blow it up, a total revenue source in the proposed budget. That, this is all funds. So general fund certainly has had our most attention this year because it is the fund that is supported by property tax and, and the one that provides many of our critical services, including police and fire. So we've had a lot of talk about that this year. But it also includes our water and wastewater fund, debt service. A new fund proposed is our health insurance fund because we have selected under your leadership to go with a self-funded plan. We will pay premiums to ourselves instead of to an insurance company and will manage that program this year for the first time. So you'll see there that fund proposed. Our hotel motel tax fund, again, that's restricted revenue. It can only be used for programs that provide for, essentially it's, it's paid, the revenue is primarily generated from hotel motel tax or occupancy tax. So the, the expenditures are then restricted for things that help benefit room nights. So encourage people to stay in hotels in Temple. So things like our tourism program. We talked a little bit last week about the Tanglefoot Festival. That's funded through the Hotel Motel Fund. And those funds cannot be used for police, fire, street maintenance. Those are restricted to tourism and other similar types of programs that encourage room night stays in our hotels. Our drainage fund, our federal and state grant fund, which includes primarily our community development block grant program. And then the reinvestment zone, which as council knows, is a program, is a, is a fund that not only holds the city of Temple increment or contributions to that, but also the other taxing entities where we are the, I guess, the host agency for, for that. So it, that will include revenue from the other participating taxing entities, including the ISVs, Belton, Temple and Troy, Bell County and others that participate in that program. And then our Temple Revitalization Corporation. So you can see there the total proposed budget for all funds. Tracy is going to talk to you about the tax rate and water and wastewater rates that support this proposed budget. And so we can reserve questions until after her presentations or I would be happy to answer any questions at this time. But that does include my not-so-brief, but brief for me overview of the FY 2026 budget and business plan.
Do you go back, I'm sorry, I should have called you before you switched. Could you go back to the very last slide that you talked about? Looking at that slide, it appears that we are adopting a deficit budget.
We are not. The difference between the revenues and the expenditures is the fact that Tracy doesn't like the way I explained this. Just, just so you know. Well, I'll explain it and then she can explain it. All right. So we, well, she can, she can tell how I'm wrong. But the way I look at it is, you know, if it, we do not issue debt for every capital equipment purchase that we make. So when we're buying a police car or we're buying, you know, many of the, of the capital equipment, really if it's, it's, if it's $150,000 or less, we don't finance that over time. So if you think about as a household, what you would do- So if you think about as a household, what you would do if you were gonna buy a car, but you weren't gonna finance it. What you would have to do is take your revenue, probably over, you know, if you're really, if you're a really good saver, maybe you could do it in a year. But, you know, probably over a couple of years, you would have to save up, put that money in your bank account. And then when you're ready, you could make the purchase for the car. The year that you purchased the car, it would look like you spent more money than you made that year because you are using money from previous periods in order to buy that car. And so when you see a expenditure over revenues in our budget, we do not and have never deficit budgeted. What we do use is fund balance. So money that is, that, that we've had revenues exceeding expenditures. We use that money to provide primarily for equipment purchases. Council has a policy that you have adopted about how that money can be used and it's very restrictive. The main reason is, is, is equipment. So it can also be used for grant matches. The key thing is one-time purchases. So it can't be recurring things that you, you know, you can't use it for salaries because next year, you know, you, you've, you've accumulated it. So it's, it's not a necessarily an ongoing thing. Now, because we budget conservatively, we budget revenues low and expenditures high. We, we pretty much always have a fund balance that we can program to capital equipment. And that's done on purpose to be conservative. So in, in years where we may have an unforeseen issue, we can address it without dipping into the rainy day fund. But that is why the expenditures are above the revenues is because it's for one-time capital expenditures that are you, that are made out of fund balance, which occurs because you had more revenue than you had expenses.
And fund balance is not the rainy day fund.
Right.
You said that, but just to reiterate.
Right. And now I'll let Tracy explain it better.
To be exact, Mayor, the total amount this year that we use was four million thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. And it is, it's three point five million for capital. We did fund some master plans with that, the neighborhood enhancement grant program, but it's, as Brandon said, as we forecast or budget revenues with the hopes that they come in over budget and expenditures under, it's the policy you set as council of how that gets back into the system. And doing it through capital, if you ever had to pause or didn't have it there, you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't have to cut personnel. It's for capital.
But also with the conservative, the, the process of conservative budgeting, always underestimating revenues, overestimating expenses leaves on a normal year and normal year is subjective, right? But that also, to be able to take three or four million dollars a year and spend on capital, what would normally be a capital purchase, also saves a lot of money in interest. Over time, to have the self-discipline to set that money aside, buying the car, we go pay cash for the car instead of going somewhere and taking out a loan for it.
Correct. And just a note in this, in this business plan, as we go out further into, and as the city grows, we are forecasting or, or have brought a lot, we call above the line, more of the capital purchases above the line and not depending on the use of the fund balance. And that can be moved around in the future.
And after we said all that, you're going to also predict that third quarter.
Yes.
Results.
Yes.
So I hope that that proves that.
Yes, I could, I could, yes. I'll have a good chart on that.
Good. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions for me before we hear from Tracy?
Actually, I need the tax rate one. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to present the proposed tax rate for FY 2026. Can you advance that, please, Kelly? Just to go over the, the calendar of, we actually started, staff started planning this budget process in December. In April 4th, budgets were due from the departments. And just to go over, the budget was officially filed with the City Secretary on July 1. We had a, council had this public hearing on July 3rd, workshop on July 11th, another workshop July 17th, and a public hearing on the city's budget. And then August 7th was the council meeting where council set the, what we call the maximum tax rate and also scheduled the adoption of the budget as of today. And then August 21st, there was a first reading that approving the tax roll and levying taxes and the first reading setting the tax rate. And that rate was set at point six nine seven five on August 21. But just to note today, August 28th, the cap at which you can set the rate is point six nine nine nine. And today is the final adoption process or process. The tax rate adoption process is governed by state law, truth and taxation, and also the city charter. Just a few of the proposed tax rate had comparing it to last year's tax rate was point six two seven five. The file budget rate was point seven five. The proposed tax rate today is point six nine nine nine. The no new revenue tax rate is point six one four four. And the rate you'd have to go above point eight zero three two for it to be a tax rate you'd have to take to the voters for approval. Again, looking at the tax rate, there's two components, the, the maintenance and operation and then the debt INS. The maintenance and operation rate is thirty-seven point five four cents. The debt rate is thirty-two point four five cents for the total of sixty-nine point nine nine cents. And that is a net increase of seven point three four cents. A small decrease in the INS and the increase in the M and O is seven point seven eight cents. Looking at the property tax roll and levy, the total adjusted value is total taxable value is eleven point seven billion. The total adjusted value of that the M and O and INS is levied on is ten point one billion, a little over that. And then the tax increment district or the reinvestment zone value is one point five six billion. Looking at the estimated revenue from those values, applying the rate of point six nine nine, the M and O levy would be thirty-eight point four billion. Interest in sinking levy twenty-nine, a little over twenty-nine million for a total of sixty-seven point four million. And the levy for the reinvestment zone would be ten point nine million dollars. And that is the city of Temple's only increment. There's, you'd have the other increments from the other participating taxing entities. And what does this tax rate mean to the average home in Temple? The average taxable value of a home in Temple this year, based on the certified values with two hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. That is an increase of five point nine percent. Apply the tax rate of point six nine nine, total tax would be fifteen hundred forty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. And it would be an annual increase of two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents or nineteen ninety a month. And just looking at, on our, our property taxes per the city charter, there is a discount of three percent, two percent and one percent for paying your taxes in October, November or December. Also wanted to point out the local option exemptions. We have the whole, City of Temple has the homestead. It's the, the greater of five thousand or twenty percent of the value. There's a disability, a local exemption of ten thousand and then over sixty-five of ten thousand. No changes proposed in those. And we also, Temple offers a disabled person and over sixty-five exemption, the freeze of the taxes if you're over sixty-five. Looking at all the exemptions that Temple off, offers is, or is applied to Temple. And some of these are state mandated, but it's three point three billion dollars. And as you look around the pie there, Homestead is twenty-seven point six six percent. Totally exempt properties are thirty-six percent, disabled veterans eighteen point five seven percent. Tax abatements make up eight point five seven percent. And again, the calendar that we've just been through today before you have the three items, four items to vote on. And I would be happy to answer any questions related to the property tax rate or our role.
What was the average, you've been going back a couple, the average taxable value and then two hundred and thirty-eight dollars per, yeah, nineteen ninety a month.
Correct.
Is for the, the average home value increase in adblocker tax.
Yes, sir.
Somebody that's over sixty-five. And the, what impact does the taxable value on their home have or an increase in the tax rate have on what they pay in adblocker tax to the city?
There, the taxes when they turn sixty-five is frozen at that level.
At that dollar amount.
Dollar amount.
Year over year.
Year over year.
Eighty years old, fifteen-year exemption or fifteen-year, no change. Over that fifteen years, no additional money's paid in other than what they were paying at age sixty-five.
Correct. Unless it's an improvement.
Sure, sure. I, I think sometimes that's forgotten.
Their homestead.
Yeah. I think sometimes that that, that's forgotten that that truly is frozen. They think, I think some folks think the tax rate or the value is frozen, but the, the dollars paid in are frozen.
I believe, I believe City of Temple adopted that too in two thousand and five, two thousand and five, two thousand and six.
Yep.
That exemption.
Now, not every entity that shows up on someone's BellCAD tax bill has the same policy. So it is, it is possible somebody will end up paying in, in total amount of adblocker tax. They're gonna pay in more in twenty-six than they did, or in twenty-five than they did in twenty-four. But it's not the city of Temple's amount that's increasing. It could be other entities.
Right.
Okay.
And not all cities offer that. So we didn't really talk a lot about that, you know, when we were talking about factors that in a lot of the focus, a lot of focus, obviously, and importantly, is on the tax rate. But when you look at our tax rate compared to other cities, if other cities don't freeze taxes, then that could, I mean, because as Tracy said, once you hit sixty-five and unless you, you know, increase it, unless you add on to your home or you move to a more expensive home, you are gonna pay the same amount of taxes regardless of what the value of your home does and regardless of what the tax rate is for the city of Temple. Unless it goes down, then you, you, you don't get penalized. You, you would, you would, you would pay the lesser of the frozen rate or, or your actual rate. And so, you know, if you've, if you have a community that, you know, I'm, I'm not sure off the top of my head what percentage of our community, you know, is sixty-five or older. But if another community doesn't offer that, then they could offer potentially a lower overall tax rate.
There are a lot of factors that, and of course, you know, most people in that, most people don't know this, and I totally understand why they don't know this. There are a lot of factors that, that push down, that, that impact our rate. The veterans exemption, you know, everyone knows that, everyone supports the veterans and appreciative of what they've done for us as citizens of the United States. But many of those veterans do not pay adblocker tax to the tune of, I believe this year in fiscal year 2025, three and a half million or will it be? Yeah.
It was a force, it's the equivalent of four cents.
Yep. And then freezing also then for those over sixty-five, then freezing that that dollar amount that's paid in. There are a lot of communities that don't, that you haven't adopted those policies or don't have nearly as many veterans living in their, in their community, simply don't have that pressure on the tax rate. And you still have to provide the services, right? You still pick up the trash, you still, you know, offer, you know, offer the police department takes care of that, fire department. The costs are the same to, to deliver to those homes. So, and obviously we're happy to, I mean, that's, that's the job, right? Is to, is a delivery of services. But those delivery of services do come at a cost.
Right. One thing I was looking at in preparation for my, for going to Austin last week and talking about the, the proposed changes to the voter approval rate was our two most recent fire engine purchases, which happened in, I think August of twenty-three and then June of twenty-four, I believe, is when council authorized the last two engines and the twenty-four, it, it was a base price and then, you know, up to another dollar amount based on the kind of final negotiations with the, with the vendor. If, if we went to the top end, then it was a twenty percent increase. If we just, if we went to the bottom end, it was over a ten percent increase. So in less than a year, for the same thing, that engine cost somewhere between ten and twenty percent more, less than a year later.
Solid waste trucks are what, almost six hundred thousand dollars apiece?
Yes.
Council, any other questions?
No.
Anything else?
That concludes the presentation on the budget and the tax rate and the tax roll.
Okay.
I have one more though.
It's at the end, the water rates.
Oh, is that different? Okay.
It's at the end. You want me to go ahead and go over the water rates?
Go ahead, please.
Okay. Can you pull up that? And that is agenda item number six.
Oh, yeah. And that really is at the end. That's the start of it. I'm sorry. That's my fault.
Then let's, let's, let's wrap up one through four first. Okay. So we're finished with staff presentations, correct?
Yes.
And open public hearing.
Yes.
The one I was gonna open about an hour and a half ago, we'll open it now. Well, Council, no other questions for staff before we move to public hearing? So I will, I will open a public hearing on items one through four as you step to the podium and state your name before your comments. Please keep your comments to, as a public hearing, to around five minutes or so. If anybody has anything they would like to say.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for your time, your service. I grew up in Temple. Love this community. Graduated high school nineteen sixty-two. Moved back eight years ago to be around family and friends and enjoy my city. The first thing that happened, I gave X number of dollars for a house that needed a lot of work. Six months later, my property taxes went up seventy thousand dollars because of the assessor in Belton.
This was when? This was when?
Eight years ago.
Okay.
Nine years ago.
Wait, would you please state your name just for the record?
I'm sorry. That, I'm Robert Hubbard. When the assessor and I hooked it up in a, in a meeting, he came in with five comparables as if, as if it made a difference. And none of us know where those comparables were. I've never seen a bureaucracy that worked in favor of the people they're supposed to serve. I've never seen a bureaucracy that worked in favor of the people they're supposed to serve. Now we have another tax increase coming up before us. I've never listened to a city manager for so long and say so much about money here, money there, money here, money there. I'm eighty-one years old. When will my taxes stop? If something happened to my wife and I physically, whatever, and I'm very blessed and we couldn't pay our taxes. You know who would get that home? Yeah. The tax commission would take it away from us. And that's not a free society in America that I love. It is a travesty that we face. I've heard nothing today about the people who are on fifteen dollars an hour, how they can even even buy groceries. I visited with a young man last week, twenty years old. Fine young man. If you want my office, it's Whataburger on thirty-first. That's where I met him. He said, sir, can I talk to you? I think he saw my gray hair and thought I had something to say, and I usually do. He said, I moved in with my mom. My cousin moved in with my mom so we could help her pay her taxes. That young man will make it because he's working on his college degree. College degrees don't mean everything, but it simply shows you have the ability and the discipline to create a program and finish it and move on up. My son is a head wrestling coach. He coached at Bonham Junior High for a while and over Parker Heights. He's now up at Frisco. There's several, there are twelve high schools in Frisco. He's the head wrestling coach and a great teacher. He will never be able to save enough money to buy a house because some years ago, the state took away social security tax or social security income and just said the teachers would live on teacher retirement. And everything I look at, I, as I said, I've been around a long time. I had a friend that told me he was confronting a United States congressman about all what was going on, not in our state. And he wanted to run against him. And he told me that after that meeting, that congressman looked at him and said, it'll take you a million dollars to run against me. He had done his homework. He said, yes, Congressman, that's cause you took seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars last year from lobbyist. You don't work for the town anymore. You don't work for the state anymore. You work for Washington. And I guess I'm trying to say, ladies and gentlemen, I'm fed up with it. From what I've heard here this morning, from a city manager who talked about nothing but this equipment and this number of personnel and all these things that she learned in college. I'm gonna try to find someplace else to move. I can't afford living in Temple. And I'm not near that at all as some of these young people who are making no money at all in comparison. They're lucky, as this young man told me, to be able to pay eight hundred dollars a month in rent to help his mom. What do we do? Do we quit living the dream? How much money did we spend on the new entrance to Temple? Well, that made a lot of difference. Made a lot of difference for people that live here. And people have a vision often. And the only answer bureaucrats ever come up with, let's do it. We'll just raise taxes. And I think it's time we stopped raising taxes. It's time, as our president is saying, at sixty-five, we've paid enough taxes. When I started my own business, I roofed my way through college. My roofing gun was his left hand. And when I started my business, the federal government made me pay fifteen dollars self-employment tax. And you know what has happened to our social security? They've robbed it twice. I have no confidence at all in what I have learned this day in this city council meeting, none at all. I am sick to death of what I see in my hometown. The only thing I see that disturbs me more than what I am facing are those that don't have anything. Every one of you sitting at this table, you're not worried about where your next meal's coming from. People come into Whataburger looking for something to eat. And some of the guys that meet there for coffee, we're gonna buy them something to eat. And it's happening more and more and more of the homelessness that's around. And you can blame no one but government for what's happening. And I'm sick of it. I'm gonna do something about it. And I appreciate every one of y'all here that represents the City of Temple. Mayor, there's one thing you said earlier, that this was, meeting was called because it was the last date that you had to be able to do it. And you said you had several meetings before that. A meeting like this at this time, as one of the ladies said, we're not being represented.
You know what? I didn't hear that.
We're not being represented. We didn't know about the other city council meetings. We didn't show up for those. I'm always a participant in my government. If I told you who I was and where I came from, you might even want my autograph. I try to stay in tune with what's going on. I grew up with nothing. I worked my way to have something. And I sat by and watched government wanna take it away from me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who else?
Good afternoon. My name's Todd Weber. I've also been a uh resident of Temple uh my whole life. Uh the only time that I have not lived in in uh Temple was when I was going to college. And as soon as I uh, as soon as I graduated, I came back to run uh my family's business and take it over after my dad passed away. My dad, uh Mike Weber, sat right there on that city couns- uh city council uh for many years, as well as the city planning commission. And uh sitting here uh listening to all that was going on and and then listening to Mister Hubbard. I uh I wrote some notes down um as I was going along, but uh some of the issues that we deal with as taxpayers in the community is that um first, we're having to uh deal with the uh valuation of the property. Um to this year, eh as as in almost every year for the last ten years, I've had to go in and spend uh from the time that I get my tax renditions. Um this year I was I was meeting with the tax appraisal district uh for almost three months. Um I had to dispute seventy-three properties um and uh that that increased in value between twenty percent and as high as sixty percent in value in this year alone. This year alone. Then after fighting that, we've got another thirteen percent that's being proposed right here. When does it stop? It has to end. As he said, um people can't afford to live. The average uh owner of a home twenty-five years ago was thirty-one years old. Now the average owner of a home is fifty-two. People cannot afford to have the homes. And for those of us that have rental properties, the taxes are hitting us so hard that we're having to pass those taxes on to the renters who then are having to leave because they can't afford even rent. It has to stop. Every single month, I've got tenants moving out. Not because we've done something wrong, but because we've had to increase their um their rents year over year. And it's because twenty percent, thirty percent, up to sixty percent just on the valuation of the property. And then turn around and have a a uh a proposed uh budget increase for another thirteen percent. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. It cannot continue. We've got to stop it. The things that we're spending money on, like you said, the entrance to the city, who cares? I mean, it's nice. We don't care. We don't need new libraries. Library is right here. Everybody's got one. Nobody cares whether you spend millions of dollars on a new library building and all the staffing that goes along with it. Nobody cares. Nobody goes to it. That's eh you know, spend the money on things people go to. Nobody goes to the library. It's all on your, it's all on your phone. Google anything you wanna, you can read it, you can Google it. Chat G P T will tell you everything you wanna know. Amazon will send the book to your house. I mean, it's it's ridiculous that what we're spending the money on. You know, we're thankful for the police and the fire and all of that. Uh we we want new roads. We want uh we want those things. Those are the things that we do need. And we don't need uh forty-five minutes uh over here to tell us what it is that we have. My dad always said, you know, I don't need to hear about the storms at sea. I just wanna see the ship in the port. Which means we know that we have all the all of those things and we appreciate those things. And we will, we will pay taxes on those things. But we don't need, we don't need so many other things um that are irrelevant and just a waste of our dollars. You know, why are we buying the trucks? Why are we not leasing the trucks or financing the trucks and keeping that cash just like any good business would do? I don't own a vehicle. I I finance or lease every vehicle I have because it's not financially smart to dump all our money into a vehicle. It's a depreciating asset. In in ten years, it's worth nothing. So lease it, pay eh pay the finance fee. It it is absolutely irrelevant whether or not you own the trucks. You know, like you said, the the things that we um that we're spending the money on that are irrelevant. But in the forty-seven years that I've lived, and I lived in South Temple within one mile of my home, of of my, the home that I grew up in my entire life, um Midway Drive has never been overhauled. Not one time. It has never been overhauled. It is so bad you can't drive down it. We we take alternate routes to get there. It is eh, that should be our priorities. Prioritize the things that matter, just like any other business would. I can't go for my business and just buy things here and there. I have to buy things that either make me money or fix the things that make me money. And that's the way the city should work. We can't just keep raising the taxes on people all the time. We've got to be smart about it. We've got to run it like a business because it is a business based on the millions and even billions of dollars that we're showing uh on that board for the last hour and a half. So, um the city, uh we're discussing the uh water and and garbage pickup and all of those things. All of those keep increasing and the services that we're being provided keep decreasing. So uh Alan mentioned it is nice to have both of the services on the same day. You know, you don't have to remember what goes out when. Um and that part of it has has been good. That oughta um eh you know. But when we have to call now for services on on uh trash, on the on the limbs and we're being minimized on what we can uh have picked up. And then as a business owner, I can't get any of my stuff picked up. And uh the rental properties, I pay the same water and and uh and trash services as anybody else, and they're not gonna pick up uh any of the um uh eviction stuff anymore. So then then what? You know, you've got to have everything uh picked up. You've got to have somebody else. It's all the services are diminishing, but the prices of everything continue to go up over and over and over. Um Parks and Rec, you know, you were talking about making a uh a division that that people were gonna be out there all the time. Um just put a sign out there. Put a sign that says, if you see something, you know, call it in. If the wood is rotting, call it in. If there's an anthill, call it in. You don't have to have somebody uh standing there all day long uh trying to trying to figure all those things out. So anyway, uh aside from that, we do appreciate what the city does, but we have to, we have to keep it within reason. All these things uh that continue to go. And yes, the fire department, the police department, uh we wanna add those things, but those are organically added because you've got more homes being built in tho- in those areas. So those new homes will be paying for those new items. There they shouldn't have to worry about whether existing residents on the other side of town are paying for those things. The people that are moving in there, their their property taxes should be paying for those things. It shouldn't have to uh increase everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Weber. You brought up, you brought up a lot and um and I I appreciate all of that as, you know, like anything else there um it's more complicated than that. And 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 I'm I'm not trying to be um dismissive or demeaning or anything, so please understand that. Let me hit on just a few things, n- not in an argumentative way, just eh it as an informative way for those that that care.
I'm not gonna stand here and tell you I know every line item.
Sure, and and that's
Thing and and what was spent. And and again, I don't care. That's what I was talking about. I don't care how the water was uh, you know, how the utilities were paid for. I don't care how the police officer. That's what the taxes are for. I don't need a line item detail about it. I don't want uh things being paid for that are irrelevant to the to the overall community that to ninety ninety-five percent of the people uh in this community do not care whether or not you build a nu- new library, do not care whether or not um you know, we've got a a big entrance to the city. We don't care. And we don't want it spent ahead of other things.
So that um again, we're just talking. Library services, the things that um that you you just said ninety-five percent of the people don't care. Um that's not true. Library services, the the amount of touches, so to speak, from residents at at the library, especially post-COVID, have increased every year. It may not be something you care about, but it's something that there's a lot of people that do care about.
I bet we could poll everybody in this room and there might be three.
That's fine, maybe not, but but there there are people that care about that.
I'm not saying nobody does.
I'm not.
I'm saying the the greater majority of people do not.
But those that it does matter to?
But is it worth the millions of dollars to, that that's what we're, that's what we're dealing with on a national scale. The the very smallest minority of of people are sometimes being the ones that are only being um you know, dealt with because they're they talk about, they're they're voicing their opinion, but the other ninety-five percent that are quiet you know, uh are are.
Let me, let me talk quickly about something that you do care about, Midway Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Myers mentioned that we don't have a street Ms. Myers mentioned that we don't have a street maintenance crew. It's gonna cost money to do that.
Sure.
The reason why Midway Drive is in the shape that it's in, what'd you say, forty-five years?
Yeah.
Is because there has always been an effort in Temple, and I've said on those councils too, that, um, no matter what you do, council member, city manager, us politicians, our charge to you, city manager, is that you keep taxes low. That's all we care about. Kegley Road? Sorta funny, not funny? Kick the can down the road for Kegley Road from two thousand fourteen until now. The difference, and I mentioned this earlier, the difference in costs, Kegley Road, two thousand fourteen, the politicians were saying, nope, don't do it. It's too expensive. We can't afford that. There was talk at one time about just shutting it down. Forget it. We can't afford it. Just shut it down. The cost from when I remember first talking about it to today, which it'll be finished today, when we first talked about it was fourteen million dollars. The final cost on that three and a half mile road, however long that is, twenty-one million dollars. Okay? Because there were councils previously that were not willing to take the, uh, the political backlash, for lack of a better word, to spend the fourteen. So they didn't spend the fourteen, so we got to spend twenty-one. Right? It goes back to Ms. Myers' comments about painting your house. Air filters are cheap. Don't change it for two years and you get to replace a eight thousand dollar system. Right? And so going back to the street maintenance, that is something that, those were decisions that have been made previously that, um, that this council is now addressing. Are we addressing everything? We're not. But we are trying to take care of the Todd Webers that are concerned about Midway Drive and concerned about renters and concerned about stuff being picked up in front of their, rental home where you just got somebody evicted. And I think there's a process to that, but I don't think the city excludes picking up stuff.
What we do now.
Is that true?
The state law requires that, um, if, if a property owner is evicting someone, they have to set their stuff out in the yard for a certain amount of time. And then if the property owner doesn't get it, then, or the renter doesn't get it, then the property owner or their management company, whoever, you know, they're working with, then has to, um, account for what's left. So they either get a dumpster and put it in, they, they make it a pile that, that is, um, uh, eligible for the, um, bulk collection, but they can't just leave it in the yard strewn about.
Okay, so the city will come by at that address and pick that up as long as it's in compliance and no.
If it's in compliance with the rest of the program.
According to the Water Department, um, last week, they said they were no longer picking that stuff up at all, period. It is our job to pick it up and take it to the dump, uh, which has also doubled in, in price. Uh, and, and we understand.
Well, we can, we can fix whatever the water, we're, we're gonna follow state law.
But.
And while we're talking about state law, um, there is, uh, you know, the city of Temple does not set your valuation.
No, I understand that.
Bell Chad does that.
And that's, you know, all I'm saying is, you go from, you get, you get beat up over there and then we come over here and, and we're dealing with the same thing on this side.
Understand, but, um, it's, I don't, I understand numbers better than anything else. I talk numbers better than I do words, so. Five years ago, to put a new officer on the street, get him through academy, get him equipped, get him in a car toward their work, their functioning in one year on their own as an officer, hundred grand. Today, two seventeen. Whenever I, we talked about trash trucks earlier, whenever I first started on council years ago, brand new trash truck, rolling off the, off the, the floor, so to speak, two eighty. Today, five sixty.
I understand.
Fire truck, five, ten years ago, eight years ago, big one, lighter truck, million bucks. Today, one point seven.
Yeah.
Salaries increase. I mean, everything increases.
I completely understand.
Whenever I first started on council, the tax rate was fifty-eight cents.
But those numbers that are over there hit us over here. Because when they, when they, when they jump a house from two hundred thousand to three twenty
Sure.
in one year, then, then you take the three twenty and now you're going, you know, times point six nine. So if you take another thirteen percent, so that money may not go in your pocket, but it does eventually. Because when you go over here and, and you go from point six one to a point six nine, that's thirteen percent increase. Um, so we got hit there and then we get hit here too.
Hundred percent understand. We also get hit with the cost of a police officer five years ago, more than a hundred percent increase.
Right, but the, but the growth of the community also brings in more money.
But it doesn't. It, it doesn't, it doesn't bring.
There's no way.
It doesn't bring in enough money to pay for those things, so.
It says, there's no way that you can add all the homes that have come into the area and.
Item two B, the property tax revenue to be raised from new properties added to the tax roll this year is three and a half million dollars. That's not enough to build the roads to those new communities, to those new, um, subdivisions. It's not enough to, to build a fire station. It's not enough to police it. It's not enough. It's simply not.
You're looking at it as a one-year thing. It's not a one-year thing. This is an annual thing. Once that, once that house is in place, it is now being taxed year over year over year over year.
You have, you have to pay that police officer year over year over year.
Totally understand, but, but, but the road and all the infrastructure is a one, one-time thing. The rest of the stuff is, is annually.
So.
So.
Yeah, it just.
It's really difficult for us to keep up.
I have rent houses. I also have rent houses. This tax rate will push some of my rent houses to the point that they're not profitable. I understand. I'm living it too. But we have to work on sustainability. Twenty-three, twenty-six million dollars to rebuild Midway? I don't think so. It's twenty-one million dollars to Kegley. And Midway is five lanes wide.
Right.
Shorter, but five lanes wide. So it is weird. We are dealing with the inflation that's come to Texas. Uh, with the growth that comes to Texas, we're dealing with inflation in general. Growth that comes to Texas is amazing. This town has grown. We have one new resident now for every four that we had in twenty twenty. We have five people for every four that we had.
Right.
Homes, trash trucks, you know, all, all of that has to be manned. Again, I'm not trying to argue with me. I, I very much appreciate um, the way that you have laid out what you've said. It's, it's very understandable, articulate. There are huge issues and we're not just worried about, we have to take care of the person that uses the library too. Right? We have to, the park system is very expensive. But on Sunday afternoon, if you go out to the parks, you'll see people out there that, um, that that might be the only green space that, because they live in an apartment, because that's what they can afford, to your point, right? I get it. But, um, there are services that have to be delivered and amenities that need to be provided for people, uh, for, for everyone. I'm not crazy about the new entrance either. But there are people that love it. You would not believe the compliments I received for that.
I.
I would.
It's, it's, to me, it is the fact that it's irrelevant. Not, not the fact that it's good or bad, it's the fact that it's irrelevant.
Not to everybody.
Uh, so things that are, are irrelevant are the issue. Deal with the things that are priorities first.
Understood.
So.
Different list of priorities. Ninety-five percent of the people would give a different list of priorities.
Yeah, most of them won't be based on, uh, you know, trash and fire and, and police.
Maybe.
So.
Yeah. Very good. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Who else? Yes, ma'am.
I repeat what I said the last time. You get a lawyer and a mic and comments and you're all in for it. This is just a.
My note takes five minutes.
That's right. It's gonna be less than that. Um, I think what we're hearing today is better clarification of a want versus a need. Everybody is agreeing about the needs, first responders, things like that. I think what we're, and remember, we all saw a budget plan for multiple years, not just one year. But one statement you made was very important, that is, it's very difficult for a community that's growing to actually expect the new residents to pay for that growth. It's always going to be allocated to everyone. Um, and that goes to a point that I made, that we can grow all we want, but it just means that more of us are gonna pay taxes. The issue, I think, is to look at things like the Park Ranger program, um, a, a number of programs that are good to have for competing with comparable cities if you, if people are gonna come here. But the question becomes, are they needs versus wants? And I'd like to impress upon the city council and city staff to really start looking at that thing. So when you look at rebates, understand what we all are going to, I'm sorry, abatements, um, what we're all going to experience with those abatements and how they're gonna pay for themselves. And we have wonderful companies that are helping with the community, but ultimately, abatements also reduce the tax revenue rolls. And we want to look at other things where people are involved with. And I, uh, years ago, there was something called the, uh, CIP Committee where you had residents working with staff to look at priorities. And I encourage, encourage, encourage the city to rethink that because that was a very viable program. Sometimes the city residents agreed with the staff, sometimes they disagreed, but you had that important input that you're hearing. People say they want. Mr. Hubbard, uh, mentioned that as well. I agree with everything that was said regarding the amount of energy and work that the city puts into this. You are running a business and you're competing with other communities. So you wanna be sure you're in lockstep with the community and you're doing them one better so that people wanna choose Temple over something else. So to that extent, you are looking at what amenities Georgetown provides or Waco provides and can Temple provide that as well. But we really do need more sharpening of the pencils as to understanding what a need is versus a want. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. Always well said. Anybody else? Anybody on the virtual platform? Nothing? Okay, very good. Then with that, I will, uh, close the public hearing. Council, any, uh, any additional comments before we move to a vote? Okay, so we are, we read these in long ago, so let me, I'll read these in quickly. So item number one is the public hearing, which we just closed. Uh, item number two A is adopting the city budget for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five, ending September thirty, twenty twenty-six, including the operating budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, business plan, capital improvement plan, general government pay plan, civil service play plan, paid plan, and budgetary policy and investment policy. Council, I will entertain a motion on item two A.
I'll make a motion to approve item two A, and do I need to read it in again? Ms. Davis?
You have special motion language.
I move that the budget for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-five and ending September thirty, twenty-six, include the operating budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, business plan, capital improvement plan, general government pay plan, civil service pay plan, fiscal and budgetary policy and investment policy be adopted.
Okay. We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Council, please cast your vote.
Aye.
Give me just a second. I think I pushed something.
I just voice, voice vote, Jenna.
Um, I also vote aye. So I don't know. Is it, there we go. Okay, so we have, uh, five votes yes, zero votes no on item two A. Two B is to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget. This budget will raise more property taxes than last year's budget in an amount of eleven million, six eighty-nine, two twenty-seven, which is a twenty point nine five percent increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the last year's rolls is three million, four hundred fifty thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars. Um, I'll entertain a motion on item two B, and council, you have special motion language on this item also.
I'll make a motion to approve item two B. I move that the property tax increase reflected in the budget be approved. This budget will raise more than, more total property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of eleven million, six hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven, uh, two, two, seven, which is a twenty point nine five percent increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be raised from the new property tax added to this rule this year is three million, is it three billion? Three million, four hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty-six.
Okay. We have a motion by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Walker. We have a second by Councilmember Kirkendall.
Mayor, um, I think I heard Mayor Pro Tim Walker say eleven nine eighty-six, maybe transpose the number?
Yeah. Eleven, six eighty-nine? She did. Does she need a reread?
I, I.
I think that clarification on the record is fine.
Okay.
Tim's better with the numbers. I'll stick with words.
It wasn't billion, by the way.
No.
Alright, so on item two B, we have a, a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker, a second by Councilmember Kirkendall. Council, please cast your vote.
Aye.
I also vote in favor. I've lost my vote. Here we go. That item, item two B fat passes five votes to zero. Item three is a second and final reading to consider adopting an ordinance approving the tax roll and authorizing calculation of the amount of tax that can be determined for all real and personal property in the city for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Council, entertain a motion. Something very simple here.
I move to approve item number three.
I'll second it.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Grant. We have a second by Mayor Pro Tim Walker. Council, please cast your vote. My vote is aye. Item three passes five votes to zero. Item four is a second and final reading to consider adopting an ordinance setting a tax rate of point six nine 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 per hundred dollars valuation, comprised of point three, seven, five, four dollars for maintenance and operations and point three, two, four, five dollars for debt service for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and making the appropriation for the regular operation of the city. Council, entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to approve item four. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point six nine nine nine, which is effective, effectively a thirteen point nine two percent increase in the tax rate.
Okay.
Have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Walker, a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Council, cast your vote.
Aye.
Item four passes five votes to zero. Moving on to item five is to consider adopting a resolution approving the third quarter financial results for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Bernard.
Being pulled up here. Uh, I'm very pleased to present the third quarter financials for the, um, nine months ended, six, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. I start off with, uh, revenues. The general fund, uh, in, as of June thirtieth, uh, the fiscal year is seventy-five percent complete. Just showing each, the major, our general fund, water sewer fund, hotel motel fund and drainage fund across the bottom, what percent of budget we are at, uh, general fund, a little over eighty percent. Water and sewer, seventy point seven five percent. And just remember the higher flows and, uh, water, uh, happened in the last three months of the fiscal year. And, um, hotel motel fund, it is at forty-seven point eight two percent. But something special to note about that comparing actual to budget, uh, this is where the Tanglefoot, uh, celebration is being funded. The revenue and the expenses are in that fund and that event has not occurred yet. So therefore, that's why they're below, um, at forty-seven point eight two percent. And then the drainage fund, 77.69%. Just looking at the general fund revenues, a composition of those ready, revenues. The budget's a total 133.1 million dollars. 28.44% of that is sales tax. Avalorum taxes at 21%. Solid waste, which includes fees associated with the landfill too, is it's, is 16.29% of the total. And I won't read on down the chart, but you can see the other percentages of other revenues. Just to highlight the major revenue source of the general fund, and this is actually looking at 10 months, not nine months. Statewide cities are a little bit above 4% or right around 4%. City of Temple, you see on the right, we're just a little bit above 3% or close to 4% growth compared to the previous year. And Waco, Georgetown, Copper's Cove, they do exceed the statewide percentage and show the larger growth percentages. I think also if you looked at Waco, Georgetown, and Copper's Cove, even Harker Heights, there's more concentration of retail. And I would say that's part of their increase in the percent of, of last year. Expenditures, again, the four funds that we highlight. General funds at 70.69%, water and sewer, close to 72%. Hotel motel fund, again, the revenue, we haven't collected the revenue for the event, and we have been making monthly payments to the vendor for the tanglefoot. But expenditures are at 68.77%. And drainage fund is at 60.65.35%. Looking at the general fund forecasting it through the end of the year, we're forecasting, and this gets back to our revenue and expenditure forecast. We're forecasting revenues will end the year at 134.9 million compared to budget. That's an increase of 1.8 million. We're forecasting expenditures will end the year at 96.79%. And that is a favorable variance when you compare actual to budget of 4.5 million under budget. Add those together and you get the 6.3 million. Again, we do adjust our rainy day fund, but each year based on the formula. But the, these are the monies that go back into the fund balance unallocated in order to fund the capital you just did in the FY 2026 budget. Looking at revenues more or less than budget, and each year, this, the, the cream color is FY 2025, the blue is 2024. You see, last year's sales tax was below budget, this year it's above. Solid waste is one that's, and a lot of that has to do with roll off and the surcharge at the landfill for outside or tonnage that's brought to the landfill. Funds this year, they've been running behind, and this year, we're forecasting they'll exceed budget or show an increase compared. Golf course used to be on the far right, now it's moving further to the left. And on the far right, property tax, you see that it's below budget. And that has to do with a lot of adjustments to the property tax roll. A lot of people have come in and that may not have had a homestead and filed for a homestead. And so there's refunds, but we've had those adjustments and a good bit of refunds this year, more than, more than normal. Annual sales tax. This is showing it historically, we, we're forecasting we're going to be about 3.82% above the budget or growth. And you look at the growth compared in 2021, 22, and three, we had double-digit growth in the last two years. That has tapered off to be right under the 4%. And I think conservatively, I forget that percentage growth for the budget for 2026. But that is, the green bar is just what we forecast, or included in the budget you just adopted for sales tax. We didn't show a large increase.
And that, that sales tax increase, that double-digit increase from 21 through 23, frankly, is what funded a lot of our growth. Right, that, that, that kept, that kept the tax rate. I don't want to say down, but it didn't impact the tax rate because there was extra revenue coming in.
Right, and, and the next year.
About a third of the budget.
In, in the year that it occurred, it, we funded capital and other things the next year. But in the next year, we also increased the budget. And there were some significant increases in the budget related to sales tax. And then last year, we had, or 2025, we backed off of that.
Right. Still met revenue projections, but we backed off the growth.
Right.
Right.
A good reminder to shop local.
Yes.
It does make a difference.
It does. Very important. Expenditures less than budget, and, and again, we, we budget personnel. We don't, each position, we budget for 100% for the full year. And I know in years past, when the police department was down 40, close to 40 positions, we had big numbers in salary lag, and this year, they've been pretty much fully staffed. So it's different departments that contribute to that, but you can see we're forecasting less lag than we did in the, the previous year. And then operating, that's, that's really made up, it's pretty consistent with the previous year. But that is made up of a lot of different, a lot of different items there. Investments, the total investments held by the city at June 30th were a little over 432 million dollars. Almost 83% of that was in government pools. We had 13.48% in some CDs and 3.57% in cash. This just looks at the average three-month treasury bill rate from January 17th, or 17 through now. We had some significant rate increases, and then they dropped some and flattened. The city of Temple's portfolio was earning 4.29%. Compared to the T bill, we're about five basis points ahead of the benchmark. And a year ago, we were earning 5.28%. And also say, 1% on our rainy, rainy day fund in interest earnings is real close to what, what used to be close to opinion and tax rate. It's a little bit less, but as interest rates went down, our investments earned less. Again, that just shows a table of the various pools, what they're earning and what we're earning and what they were a year ago. Our, our, most of our funds are very short-term in nature. Average year, I mean, weighted average maturity is a low number. Capital improvement programs, when we talked earlier about the, the INS tax rate. This is, we have today, and this is the biggest one yet. We have 609 billion. 609 million.
I did that to you, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Projects underway or scheduled, and again, that's a very robust capital improvement plan.
So that number grows. Is that at all, for projects that have been on there for a while, is that adjusted for inflation? Project A, you know, costs X number, now it costs X plus?
Again, this is a, an accounting schedule, and when projects roll off of that schedule.
Yeah.
They roll off in the year they're completed.
Right.
So it could nearly be completed in September, but not officially completed till October. It will stay on the plan for another year. But we do not, this is based on cost, not its cost.
But if, if a project cost increases, if the opinion and probable cost increases and we adjust the budget as a result of that, that would reflect in there.
Got it.
If, if you adopt a, a budget amendment to actually increase the project budget.
Okay.
Good point.
That's helpful.
So it can, because that, that has occurred from time to time.
Okay.
Occurs often. Because we continue to monitor and update those as we get further along in the design or, we don't let them be stagnant. We want to, we want to have the updated cost. Again, this just shows that's the capital improvement plan based on dollars of what percent is under construction or in progress, what's in design engineering, what projects are complete, and what projects are in the planning phase. Strategic investment zone, I did list here that what is designed to encourage redevelopment of strategically important neighborhoods and corridors, and this really applies to corridors, it can be. The city participates with dollars or in-kind services and encourage redevelopment. The grant matrix includes funds or services related to those six items that are listed. Currently, or since the pro, programs inception in 2008, there's been funding or allocation of close to 2.5 million. 2,710,000 has been expended or encumbered to date. The remaining available funds are 423,000. Right, as of today, we have 10 pending applications. And in FY 2025, the neighborhood improvement grants were funded from this CIS dollars. In FY 2026, they'll have their own allocation. But we have a total of nine neighborhood improvement grants pending for a total of 47,915 dollars. And corridor grant, we have one that's 4,320. And that concludes the third quarter financial presentation. Be happy to address any questions?
Counsel, anything for Tracy? I think counsel, if there's no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for third quarter financial results. So moved.
I'm moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kirkendall. We have a second by Councilmember Pilkington. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Aye.
Item five passes five votes to zero. Item six is to consider adopting a resolution setting the current utility system fees to be effective October 1, 2025.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and counsel. These fees are what would support the budget that was just adopted. Here we have water customers. As of July, we had a total of 36,705 customers. For water customers, 3,345 were commercial, the remainder were residential. Just again, look at the growth from 2015 to 2025, went from 23,000 customers to 30, over 33,000. The growth of 10,000 customers. It's wastewater customers, again, a total of 31,791. 2,415 are commercial, the remainder are residential. The water wastewater fund, the total revenues that was approved in the budget, 76.2 million. And the expenditures equal that. Of the, of the revenue, about 49, close to 50% is water services. 43.57 is wastewater. And on the expense, expense side, the operations account for about 43%. Debt service and the capital improvements, close to 38%. And unlike the general fund, the general fund's over two-thirds personnel. The water and sewer fund is 15.41% dedicated to personnel cost. Just the rates that are presented before you include some of the cost drivers to the rates. Are the staffing that Ren went over in presentation that were added to the water and sewer fund, and those are staffing for FY 2026, because the rates here are for 2026. Also, it's additional cost related to various operational costs, supplies, chemicals for treatment, and then electricity and facility maintenance, and then the capital improvement program. And just, this is for the future capital improvement plan, not the existing past. In the budget that was just adopted, it is 317.5 million dollars of capital. And out of that, 29%, 29.6% of it's related to water capital improvements, and over 70% is to wastewater. And just then on the far right, just drilling into that a little bit more, where we talk about taking care of growth and capacity, what, what, what are we spending on growth and future capacity? Or what, what we're taking for in the past? On that wastewater, 46% of that spend is related to growth and capacity, where 53.7% is related to INI and sanitary sewer overflows. And then looking at the water side, you know, close to 40% rehab, only 20% growth in capacity, but we just completed a major expansion at our water treatment plant. This is just a detailed listing of those water and wastewater projects. And it also categorizes them by growth and capacity in the rehab. Getting to the proposed rates as of, and these would be effective 10-1. It's increasing the minimum rates for water. The three-quarter inch residential rate, the minimum rate would increase from 12.75 cents to 13.4, 40 cents, $13.40. And then the volumetric rate would increase from $4.50 per thousand gallons to $4.85 per thousand gallons. And on the wastewater rates, the base rate would increase from $22.10 to $25.90. Volumet, volumetric rate would go from $9 per thousand gallons of flow to 9.75. And if you look how does City of Temple compare to other cities? And we were able to get updated rates on other cities that were proposing rate increases. And I believe Flegerville, San Marcos, Austin, Waco, and Georgetown are all proposing rate increases. You see City of Temple, our proposed rate is there in the green at 90, and that's based on an average. That's based on average residential bill. And I believe it's at 8, 8,000 gallons or, yeah, 8,000 gallons. And you just see where we sit. And also wanted to note, when you look at our utility rates, there's two cities here that do not have any type of impact fees associated with utilities, and that is Temple and Bryan. And that concludes the presentation on the water rates. Be happy to answer or address any questions?
Thank you. Counsel, anything for Tracy? Of course, those rates are, are enterprise fund rates intended to sustain the operation of the water wastewater system.
Yes, to include maintenance and operation and capital.
Yep, so, you know, a few folks have said you have to run the city like a business. Well, that's a business within the business of the city, so. As cost increase there, those water rates go up. Okay, very good. Anything else, counsel? All right, if there's nothing further, counsel, I'll entertain a motion on item six.
So moved. Move approval.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kirkendall. We have a second by Councilmember Grant. Counsel, cast your vote, please.
Aye.
Item six passes five votes to zero. We appreciate everyone's attendance at today's meeting. It is currently.
Mayor, can I say a few thank yous real quick before you close out?
I'm sorry.
We have a, a really great team here with us, so I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to introduce them to you and extend my really truly heartfelt gratitude, gratitude for all of the hard work that they've done this year. This has been, as counsel knows, a more time-intensive process. It's always a time-intensive process, but this one has been extra time as we've really tried to balance out, you know, and, and taking a hard. you know, and, and taking a heart, what, what many of the speakers today said, what, you know, what is a need and what is a want and really trying to get down to the, um, the, the basics of, of providing police, fire, solid waste services, which is what this budget that you just adopted funds. Um, and they have gone through multiple scenarios, um, uh, again and again with me. Late nights, weekends, um, I really, it, it's, 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 um, it's a very dedicated team and I really appreciate them. They are smart, very talented, very dedicated. They truly embody our mission of, of exceptional service with their, their hearts for service. And so I'm going to call them out by name, the ones who are here, and there's a few others who weren't, aren't here this morning, but, um, Jennifer Emerson leads the group. Um, she is a, an amazing leader for, for our budget team. And she, um, has never, um, even given me an indication that she's irritated with all of the requests that I've had. So I, I really am truly grateful. Um, Sherry is not here today. Sherry Pogar, uh, is our, our, uh, really heavy in our capital work. And as Tracy mentioned, we have a lot of capital projects going on. So she was really instrumental in, in working through many different variations of that with me as well. Miranda Drake, who, um, was with the city and we were, uh, uh, happy to be able to steal her back, um, and, and bring her talent and, um, dedication back to the City of Temple. Um, she has done an incredible job. Stacy Reisner is not here today. Um, but, but she does a lot of work on, on treasury and, and debt management and forecasting. Um, Jess was here. I think he had to leave. Jess Martin is our payroll, um, director. And so he ran um, countless scenarios for me on, on, as, as a lot of this, uh, focused on personnel and health insurance. And so appreciate all of, of those efforts and trying to keep track of all of the many different changes that I made. Um, they did a great job. Um, I don't see Veronica, but, uh, Veronica, uh, Taylor is, uh, Taylor is here. Uh, Joanne is here, Chelsea is here, Krista is here. I don't think Elsa is here. Um, so thank you guys so much for the hard work that you've done. Um, what Jennifer does is she splits the different divisions, uh, between her team here. And so they, um, they worked on the backend through all of the different variations and scenarios and got us to a point where we can present this budget that, um, that I think will be meaningful for the community for the upcoming year and help us to provide those services that our, our community expects from us and that are so very important, especially our, just the, the, the basics, the police, fire, streets, solid waste. Oh, I sure did. I'm sorry. Um, and this person who's sitting right next to me, I forgot the leaders. Uh, so yes, Melissa Probowski, who's, who's not, uh, in the room today, and then Tracy, of course, y'all know Tracy, but I mean, the, the incredible team that they have assembled, that they put together, the leadership they provide for the organization, um, it's the best of the best. We're, we're really fortunate.
You know, I think this year probably, being that it was a, maybe a little more difficult, challenging year. Uh, I think somebody was told to find seven million dollars, if I remember that, something like that. Um, I don't know that counsel has ever participated to the level that we have. I told Carl that budgeting was actually pretty easy and it's not, you know, we handle it. And Carl, who's newly appointed, was like, Davis, no, you lied to me. But I don't know that we've ever been as involved as we have ever in my time. And I don't know that the, uh, the, the work is probably the same year after year. This is the first time I think we've really, in a long time that we've really seen the work. And it is, uh, it's, it's amazing, the work that you do and it's appreciated. Um, to take a three hundred-plus million dollar budget and get it to the dollar and sometimes the penny is amazing. And then at the end of the year, we look up, we just had third quarter results. Another three or four months, we'll see fourth quarter results. And y'all are spot on every time. And I know that comes from leadership and that comes from experience in the seat. And we, uh, as council members that raise our hand to the public and say, let me do this. I can help. Thank y'all for helping us because it's, again, I think this year to me is probably the most, uh, the most we've been in the budget and it just makes us understand so much better what you guys do. So thank you for everyone and the work. Anything else? So-
I wanted them to do the wave.
I thought you were saying you're not worthy. So I guess I can go on vacation, right? Something. So, thank you for your time. It is one PM. Thank you for all those that attended or attended virtually and, um,